All right, thank you. And now the moment that many people have been waiting for because I think that many of our public callers, many of our commenters were really trying to call in for this item. So we're up to item 19. Item 19 is a public hearing regarding the appeal of an action of the Los Angeles County Committee on School District Organization to approve a petition to transfer territory from the Glendale Unified School District to the La Cañada Unified School District. The CDE recommends that the State Board deny the appeal, thereby affirming the decision of the County Committee to approve the petition and allowing the territory transfer to proceed. This item will be presented by Juan Morales, and Joshua Speaks of the CDE. Juan, please begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Darlene Hammond, Vice President Glover Woods, Chief Deputy Nicely, members of the Board. Once again, my name is Juan Morales. I'm the Director of the School Facility and Transportation Services Division. With me here today is also Mr. Josh Speaks, who has been the lead on this item for us, along with Ms. Mary Levine and Christopher Merkle, who is the Administrator over our School District Organization team. I realize it's been a long day, and I wish I could tell you we have a simple, straightforward item for you this afternoon. That is not the case. There's quite a bit of background and complexity to this item. So we're going to walk you through the item and our recommendation as clearly and as concisely as we can, since we performed a very comprehensive analysis, so please bear with us. So, let's get started. The reason we're here is because a sufficient number of residents from the neighborhood known as Sagebrush submitted a petition to the L.A. County Office of Education requesting to transfer that territory from the Glendale Unified School District to the La Cañada Unified School District. That petition was then reviewed by the Los Angeles County Committee on School District Organization staff. They issued a report, and they found that four out of the nine conditions were met. They recommended to the L.A. County Commission that the petition be denied. However, the L.A. County Commission found that all nine of the standards were substantially met, and they ultimately approved the petition. As a result, Glendale Unified exercised their statutory right to appeal before the State Board of Education, basically challenging the action by the L.A. County Committee. So what is the Board's role in this process? It's basically to either approve or deny Glendale's appeal. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about what that means on the next slide. But beyond that, the Board also has discretionary authority. We can act as de novo, which basically means that we can perform an independent analysis, which staff did for this item. And the Board has quite a bit of flexibility in approving or denying the appeal, even though all nine conditions may or may not be met. However, if the Board does approve the territory transfer, the Board will have to establish an election area, and we're going to talk a lot more about that a little bit later in the presentation. So going back to the Board's actions of approving or denying the appeal. Once again, this is Glendale's appeal, challenging the L.A. County Committee's approval of the territory transfer. If the Board denies the appeal, then that means that the territory transfer process will continue, and it will go to an election. If the Board approves the appeal, then basically the territory transfer stops. It can be a little confusing, given the item and the appeal that we have. We just wanted to make sure that we clarified what your action will mean. Based on our analysis, we are recommending that the Board deny the appeal, which will allow the territory transfer process to continue. We are also recommending that the Board set the election area of not just the territory area in question, but also to include the attendance areas of La Crescent Valley and La Cañada High Schools. Now, before we get into the reasons for the petition and the conditions, I wanted to provide you some quick information about this territory. First of all, this is the largest territory transfer that we have reviewed. It includes 386 acres, 879 parcels. All of this territory is within the boundaries of Glendale. However, it's within the city limits of La Cañada Flintridge, which is very common to have the attendance areas extend beyond the city limits, particularly in L.A. County. We have about 400 students that live within this territory, and it's important to note that about half of them are attending La Cañada schools, even though they reside within the attendance of Glendale Unified. So with that, I'm going to have Josh get into the reasons for the petition and the conditions in more detail. Josh?
Good afternoon, members of the State Board. As Juan said, I'm Joshua Speaks. I work within the Facilities Division as part of the School District Organization team. I've been here at the Department of Education for about two years now. Many of you have seen some of my waiver items come before you in the past, but this is my first time actually standing up here and presenting, so I am terrified, I mean, excited to be here. The petitioners have presented us with several reasons for the transfer. Their entire justification is included on Page 5, Section 3.0 of Attachment 1 of our analysis. However, I've listed some of the more significant reasons on the screen here. The petitioners feel that the La Cañada School District has deep partnerships with the city, local business community, school families and non-families. They believe that their students, as part of the city, should be included, and those relationships should benefit from them. Not only do they see this benefit to the territory students, but they also believe that the current situation, where their students are residents of the city but not included in the city's school district, actually creates disparity between their students and the other students residing in the city of La Cañada Flintridge. And lastly, they believe that this transfer would respect and honor the voices of the community, which has overwhelmingly supported this transfer through their signatures on the petition, and also polls that have been done locally that indicate overwhelming support for the transfer. So, both of the school districts that are involved in this transfer have taken positions on this item. Glendale Unified School District has consistently opposed the transfer. They adopted resolutions to that effect in 2002, in 2016, and obviously, they're the reason for this appeal before us today. La Cañada initially expressed concerns about having the capacity to absorb all of the students. Now, I want to be clear, La Cañada never opposed the transfer. Even when they were expressing their capacity concerns, they were simply looking for ways to ease the transition. However, presently, La Cañada is fully in support. They do not have any concerns anymore about having the capacity to handle the students. And the district most recently adopted a resolution in January of 2023 reaffirming their support, and they verbally reiterated that support at a December joint meeting between the school district and the city of La Cañada Flintridge. As noted above, Glendale has appealed this item on both procedural grounds and the grounds of potential racial and ethnic discrimination. So there are two statutes that a territory transfer can be appealed under. One of them has to do with procedural violations or potential procedural violations. The other is specifically focused on racial and ethnic discrimination or disparities. Glendale has cited both of those sections in their appeals. Their procedural objection is that the County Committee used an improper procedure and did not provide substantial evidence to contradict County Committee staff's analysis and findings. So as Juan noted, the County Committee initially recommended that only four of the nine criteria had been met and recommended denying the petition. When the County Committee voted, they voted on all nine criteria as one single unit. They didn't vote on them individually. And the petitioners argue that that violates the Department's School District Handbook, which indicates that each criteria should be voted on separately. However, we would note that, as the handbook itself says, it is purely an advisory document, and it is not binding on local educational agencies. Furthermore, we don't believe that the County Committee is bound by its staff's conclusions, and disagreeing with a staff assessment is not an illegitimate exercise of the County Committee's discretion. Disagreements like that over local decision-making are not subject to State Board review under the provisions of the ED Code. So our report will review each of those nine conditions. As Juan said, you do have the authority to do a de novo review of one of these transfers, so we will review each of those nine conditions as they currently exist on the ground, but we will not attempt here to second-guess the County Committee's decision-making. The district also expressed concern that the loss of minority students would jeopardize their ability to educate students in an integrated environment, which is one of the nine criteria. However, by their own estimates, the loss in minority students is offset by an equivalent loss in white students, leaving the overall racial balance within the district unchanged. For example, in their own appeal, they estimated that Mountain Avenue Elementary would lose 25.9% of its minority students, but they also estimated that it would lose 24.75% of its white students. Those numbers are obviously, they're functionally equal, so that would do no damage to the district's overall efforts to maintain an integrated environment. I will address the next three objections together, as they all stem from the same fundamental argument. The district claims that their Board's policies on racial discrimination and segregation are more robust. They claim that the transfer would have negative impacts on English learners, and that Glendale promotes diversity to a greater extent than La Cañada. Their evidence for those contentions all stems from the fact that, as part of their bilingual education program, they offer dual-language immersion as one of their options. And they note that La Cañada, while it has bilingual education programs, does not offer dual-language immersion. That is true. They offer dual-language immersion, La Cañada does not. However, dual-language immersion programs are only one recognized option here in California for addressing the needs of English learners. It's an effective option, no one would dispute that, but it is only one option. A smaller district offering a more limited set of options, all of which are recognized by California as academically appropriate methods of educating English learners, is not the same as being lenient on discrimination. It's not the same as failing to serve English learners, or failing to promote diversity. In fact, if you look at the numbers on English learner progress for both districts, they're fairly equivalent. Both districts have seen wide fluctuations in the last two years, with 52% of Glendale English learners making progress towards proficiency in '21-'22, and 60.3% in '22-'23. The respective numbers were 78.9% in '21-'22, and 53.1% in '22-'23 for La Cañada. Small sample sizes that are always involved in looking at subsets of students often lead to swings. As you'll note in those numbers, there are wide swings from year to year, but the important point is that both districts exceed the state average in English learner progress. Furthermore, La Cañada's English learners score in the green category in both the English Language Arts and Mathematics Assessment on the state's Smarter Balance summative assessment and the California Alternative Assessment, whereas Glendale's English learners scored in the orange category for both English Language Arts and Mathematics. Therefore, it's not evident to CDE that La Cañada's English learners are less well-served educationally than Glendale's. The final objection voiced in the appeal is regarding the student losses at Mountain Avenue. That's the elementary school that would be most affected by this transfer. The petitioners have suggested that any negative impact of enrollment losses at Mountain Avenue Elementary can be offset by transferring students from impacted campuses elsewhere within the district. Glendale objects in their appeal that such proposals are speculative and do not guarantee that the district can maintain its current level of campus diversity. It is true that any enrollment area changes or student transfers proposed by the petitioners are speculative. However, speculation by the petitioners does not constitute grounds for an appeal under the Education Code. As you may recall from previous district reorganization issues, the Education Code requires that nine minimum threshold criteria are examined before approval may be given to a school district reorganization. The County Committee, as Juan said, found that all nine were substantially met for this transfer. These conditions are laid out in Education Code Section 35753. CDE has conducted a thorough review of these nine conditions, and we will look at each one of these. Some of them are relatively straightforward, and will not require much discussion beyond what is in the item before you. Others are a little bit more complicated. The first of the nine conditions requires that the reorganized district will be adequate in terms of the number of pupils enrolled. Now, CDE in the past has adopted regulations specifying exactly what that means for elementary school districts, high school districts, and unified school districts. And in CDE's regulations, the minimum enrollment required for a unified school district is 1,501 students. Both districts comfortably exceed that threshold. The student population of Glendale is about 24,400, and the student population at La Cañada is about 3,800. CDE finds this condition substantially met. Condition 2 requires that each district is organized on the basis of substantial community identity. Now, I want to emphasize that it is important to note that this condition does not ask about the community identity of the territory being transferred. A lot of the public testimony and public discussion surrounding this item, especially at the county level, was about the community identity of the folks in the Sagebrush area. But that's not what the standard focuses on. The standard focuses on how the transfer will impact the community identity of the two districts that are involved post-transfer. In this case, the County Committee staff report emphasized that the territory has a strong community identity with the locality in general, and not with any particular set of city boundaries. Now, at the L.A. County Committee staff level, they argued that this indicated that there was not an issue of organization on the basis of substantial community identity, and so they said that this condition was not met. However, we feel that that actually argues in favor of this condition, because it implies that adding the Sagebrush residents to either of the districts is not going to substantially change the community identity of the districts involved. Furthermore, with over 250 transfer area students attending La Cañada schools in the '22-'23 school year, without any notable changes in the community identity of the district, we feel it's unlikely that transferring the remaining students in the territory will have a significantly different outcome. So CDE also finds this condition substantially met. Condition 3 asks whether the transfer will result in an equitable division of property and facilities of the original district or districts. Now, there are no Glendale facilities within the transfer area, and thus, no real property will be changing hands as part of this transfer. Because of that, no division of property funds or obligations other than bonded indebtedness is required, and facility impacts will be minimal. And again, we would note that already, half or more of the students in the Glendale School District are attending La Cañada schools on inter-district transfers, so CDE finds this condition substantially met. Condition 4 requires that the reorganization will preserve each district's ability to educate the students in an integrated environment, and will not promote racial or ethnic discrimination or segregation. Our report details the various factors considered in our analysis on Page 11 of Attachment 1. After examining these factors, CDE staff have concluded that due to the relatively small number of transfer students, the fact that both districts already have well-integrated populations, and the fact that the students in the transfer area reflect the same racial balances in the districts as a whole, the transfer will not significantly affect the racial balance of either district, or its ability to educate students in an integrated environment. So we find this condition substantially met. Here, you will see a breakdown of the districts on racial and ethnic grounds. As you'll see, Glendale is roughly 60% white, and 40% minority students, with the largest minority group being Hispanic students, at about 20%. La Cañada is 43% white, with 57% minority students, the largest minority group being Asian students, at about 30%. So while you'll see that the districts are not identical, they both represent well-integrated mixes of racial populations. Our handbook recommends not only examining districts as whole entities, but examining school site data when looking at larger districts, as demographics can often shift from area to area within a large district. In this case, if we drill down a little further into the Glendale data, the student population at Crescenta Valley High School, which is the Glendale school that includes the transfer territory and its attendance area, looks even more like La Cañada, with 52% white students, 23% Asian students, and 15% Hispanic students. Now, Condition 4 does not specifically cite factors like socioeconomic status, students with disabilities, English learners, but we feel that this information can also provide helpful context. So you'll see that we also have a table here, providing a comparison of those factors as well. There's more divergence here. You'll see that Glendale has a significantly higher population of English learners, as well as students of lower socioeconomic status. However, again, if we drill down and look at school site data, going back to Crescenta Valley, some of those differences become a little less extreme. Crescenta Valley has about 4% English learners, and 22% of its students are socio-economically disadvantaged. So while the districts are a little bit further apart on these metrics, if you consider the actual schools these students attend, they're not quite as disparate as they seem. Condition 5 requires that any increase in cost to the state, as well as a result of the proposed reorganization, will be insignificant and otherwise incidental to the proposal. To this end, our fiscal staff here provided a hypothetical estimate of the impact of the transfer on both districts' LCFF funding, and that can be seen in Attachment 3 of the item in front of you. No increase in state cost was identified. The LCFF funding would simply shift from Glendale to La Cañada. The other potential cost concern that we looked at was due to the earlier concerns expressed by La Cañada about housing all of the territory students. Now that the district has the necessary facilities in place to house all of those students, we no longer feel that there's any concerns on that front. Even if the district were, at some point in the future, to see a need for new school facilities, state funding is not automatic, and any request for the state to shoulder a portion of those future building costs would be discretionary on the part of the state. So CDE finds this condition substantially met as well. Condition 6 requires that the reorganization will continue to promote sound educational performance in both districts. Before continuing to discuss this condition, I actually want to say a word here about these districts. Both of them are top performers statewide. Unfortunately, in a contested transfer like this, sometimes everyone involved has a tendency to focus on the flaws of the districts involved. So I just want to note at this point that both of these districts serve their students extremely well, and stand as examples to their peers around the state. However, having noted that, this condition is not really concerned with the overall quality of the offerings of a district, or the intention is not to draw direct comparisons between the two districts. One can believe that one district offers a better set of educational offerings than the other, and still find the condition met. The condition asks us to look at the impact of the transfer on each district's existing educational programs. CDE staff agree with the assessment that was originally offered by the L.A. County Committee staff report. Both districts offer broad, high-quality offerings that outperform statewide averages. The number of transfer students is too small to meaningfully affect those district programs, and there is no indication that this transfer will cause any of the programs offered by either districts to alter or end. CDE finds this condition substantially met as well. Condition 7 looks at the possibility of increased facilities costs associated with the transfer. We took a very close look at this condition, which is the focus of your Attachment Number 2, due to La Cañada's previous statements about their inability to house all of the transfer area students. At the time that this was being heard before the L.A. County Committee, La Cañada ultimately committed to housing the additional students using portable classrooms. That only raised additional concerns here within CDE due to the small size of Palm Crest Elementary School campus, which is the primary recipient of any elementary school students if this transfer were to take place. However, in the time since the L.A. County Committee hearings, three factors have contributed to satisfy our concerns. First, the number of students in the transfer area in La Cañada overall has been on decline. In addition, the campus of Palm Crest Elementary has actually undergone a significant construction effort. Those upgrades were a product of the district's 2016 facilities master plan. They were not a direct result of the discussion of this transfer. However, the result has been a significant upgrade in capacity while simultaneously freeing up additional play space. This was done because the site, they replaced portables and some single-story structures with two new two-story buildings that allow them to utilize their campus space a little bit better, reduce the overall footprint of their buildings, while actually increasing the number of classrooms and the room for administrative space. Finally, the number of students attending La Cañada schools on inter-district transfers has been on the rise in recent years, in effect, partially implementing the phase-in that La Cañada originally suggested when they were looking at this transfer. So all of those factors have conspired to result in the free capacity to absorb the transfer area students, elementary, middle, and high school, without anticipating any need for significant new construction. So CDE finds this condition substantially met as well. Condition 8 requires us to determine whether or not the proposed reorganization was primarily designed to increase property values. Again, I want to be clear about what this condition is asking us to examine. It does not require that property values remain unchanged by the transfer. It doesn't even state that residents of the area cannot anticipate increases in their property values. The condition requires a determination as to whether that's the primary reason for the transfer. Analysis done at the County Committee level found that the transfer would likely result in some increase in property values, and a similar investigation done by CDE staff confirmed that assumption. However, nothing in the transfer documents submitted by the petitioners indicated a primary interest in increasing local property values. Further, we need to bear in mind that this attempt to transfer this territory actually began back in the 1960s, well before the modern increases in California real estate prices. So it seems unlikely that an effort that has been sustained for over 60 years by completely different groups of individuals was motivated primarily by a desire to see a moderate increase in property values. We find this condition substantially met as well. Condition 9, this is our last condition, we're coming to the end here, looks at whether or not the reorganization will continue to promote sound fiscal management, and will not cause a substantial negative effect on the fiscal status of any of the districts involved. So it's important to keep in mind the word "substantial negative effect." Any transfer of territory from one district to another is going to involve some loss of revenue or bonding capacity, even if it's only a single home. So the question is, is that impact substantial? CDE's fiscal staff conducted a thorough analysis of the effects of this transfer, which again, can be seen in Attachment 3. It should be noted that the analysis that was done by our fiscal staff assumed a loss of 210 territory students. These are the students who are not already attending La Cañada schools through inter-district transfers. That number was based on '21-'22 enrollment data. '22-'23 actually saw a lower number of students remaining in the territory enrolled in Glendale schools by about 50 students. But because that was a significant divergence from previous levels that had been relatively consistent for the last few years, staff chose to use the '21-'22 data in order to make sure that they were estimating the maximum impact of the transfer. It should also be noted that some of that remaining 210 students could choose to remain enrolled in Glendale schools. La Cañada's Board has adopted a policy ensuring that any Sagebrush-area student who wishes to remain enrolled in Glendale will receive a lifetime rather than annual inter-district transfer. This means that the estimate provided by CDE fiscal staff should be seen as the upper threshold of the potential impact, not a guaranteed impact. Under these assumptions, Glendale Unified would see a loss of up to $2 million in LCFF funding, which would go to La Cañada instead. This represents less than 1% of the district's overall revenue. Additionally, the territory to be transferred represents about 1.85% of the district's assessed valuation, lowering the district's potential bonding capacity by that same amount. The extent to which some of this revenue loss may be offset by reduced expenses is uncertain. District operating costs consist of fixed expenses such as facility costs, which are not easily adjustable on the basis of enrollment figures, and also variable costs such as school meal programs, which can be reduced as student numbers decline. CDE staff are unable to estimate what percentage of the revenue loss may be offset by reductions in variable costs. CDE staff do not believe that a revenue reduction of less than 1% or a decrease in bonding capacity of less than 2% constitute a substantial negative effect on the district's financial management or fiscal status, so we find this condition also substantially In conclusion, CDE finds all nine conditions have been substantially met. In addition, we found no compelling reasons to overrule the decision of the County Committee. At this point, I'd like to reiterate the recommendation that we made earlier. CDE recommends that the State Board deny this appeal, which would affirm the decision of the County Committee to approve the petition and allow the territory transfer to proceed to an election. If you were to choose that option, you would also be required to set the election area, and we are recommending that you set the election area as the proposed transfer area, along with the attendance areas of Crescenta Valley and La Cañada High along with the attendance areas of Crescenta Valley and La Cañada High School, which are the two high schools that contain the attendance areas for the territory. So with that, we wanted to examine both our recommendation and some alternatives, but we wanted to explain first how we evaluated these options. The question before us was who, in addition to the people in the transfer area, will be affected by the transfer, and what are the magnitude of those effects? Clearly, the most direct impacts are going to be felt by the voters in the Sagebrush territory being transferred, which is why they're actually required by law to be included. CDE staff believe that there will also be impacts to the families that attend the schools losing and receiving these transferring students. These impacts are not of sufficient magnitude to change our recommendation, but they are of importance to local residents, and I think that's an important distinction to maintain here, is the nine criteria evaluate the impacts to the districts involved. In setting our election area rationale, we are looking at impacts to the residents of the districts involved, because we're asking who should have a voice at the local level in this election process. One example of such impacts would be a minor tax increase to all Glendale USD residents as they absorb a portion of the district's bond repayment currently being paid by the territory residents. This amounts to approximately 1.84% increase in the cost of bond repayments to residents. Another example is the possible cascading effect of backfilling for the loss of enrollments at Glendale Schools affected by the transfer. For example, we estimated that Mountain Avenue Elementary may see a loss of about 15% of its current students. That could result in students from surrounding schools being transferred in order to maintain sufficient enrollment at the site. So those are just meant to be a couple of examples, not an exhaustive list. CDE staff don't feel that we're in a position to appreciate or assess all the potential impacts of a large territory transfer on local populations, which is why the law requires this to go to a local election. So in determining the recommended election area, CDE staff considered three options that we wanted to present to you. The first option, and the one that we are recommending, is to include the transfer area itself along with the attendance areas of Crescenta Valley and La Cañada High Schools. This casts the broadest net, bringing in the largest pool of voters who may be measurably affected by this transfer and allowing them all to have a voice in the process. Another option that we consider equally viable would be to include the attendance areas of the two elementary schools directly affected, Palm Crest and Mountain Avenue, along with the transfer territory. This would have the benefit of drawing an election area that includes voters who will experience more direct and more significant effects from the transfer. However, the drawback is that some affected voters would be excluded by having the smaller election area. That's why CDE staff did not recommend this option. The final option would be to hold the election just in the Sagebrush territory. That is the minimum required by state law, and it's consistent with past state board practice. However, most prior territory transfers have been small, and therefore unlikely to have significant effects on the surrounding communities. The benefit to this option is that it ensures that only voters who are most directly and immediately impacted by the transfer would participate in the election. However, it does exclude that larger pool of voters who will also see effects from the transfer. So the question before you, and when setting the election area, is to determine to what extent the impact of the transfer of territory outside of that territory is significant enough to justify the inclusion of those voters in the election. With that, I would like to thank you for your time and attention. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. At this point, we want to open the public hearing, and so we want the public comment slide to be displayed, please. And I will hereby open the public hearing at 3:58 PM. We will first hear from the petitioners in support of the territory transfer from Glendale to La Cañada. They will have 10 minutes to make their presentation. We will then hear from the applicants, the appellants, sorry, Glendale Unified School District. They will have 10 minutes to make their presentation. After the presentations, we will open up the phone line for public comment from individuals who are not part of either presentation. So petitioners, you may begin.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, President Darlingham and Vice President Glover Woods and distinguished board members. I'm Tom Smith. I'm the chair of the Citizens Committee that launched this petition in 2013, and joining me today are representatives from the La Cañada Unified School District, as well as the city of La Cañada itself, both of which fully support the transfer, by the way. So with our limited time today, I'm going to be really brief, but I wanted to point out that the packets that you provided earlier provide a good summary of many of the facts that we feel supports our position. So bear with me so I can get through this. I'll just read it to you if you don't mind. So from the beginning, the heart of this petition was to bring equality to Sagebrush students by enabling them to enjoy a sense of belonging and wholeness as an integral part of their educational experience, and also to provide them the absolute right to attend their community-based schools. In La Cañada, the city and school district collaboration is the social fabric of that community. Because of this, a transfer would greatly enhance the social capital of Sagebrush students through a greater sense of wellness and inclusion. In its recommendation to deny the appeals, CDE recognized these outcomes and how they would provide substantial benefits to the Sagebrush students. The CD also found that impacts to GUSD's finances, programs, socioeconomic, and DEI shifts would be insignificant. Over 300 Sagebrush students now attend LCUSD via permits, and there has been no reported significant impacts to GUSD's local schools as a result. Permits have been a Band-Aid, but they are not a permanent fix, as they can be curtailed or denied by GUSD. Also, they do not resolve all inequity issues, such as parents are still left without a voice in the governance of the community schools their children attend. So given that Sagebrush has distinct delineated neighborhood boundaries and is fully contained within the city of La Cañada, but not within its school district, it's a unique situation that would not set a precedent for future piecemeal transfers. So for these reasons and more to come, petitioners ask this board to affirm the county committee approval and deny the appeals. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Andrew Gomez Blumenfeld, and I want to spend some time talking to you about the area proposed for election. As detailed in a letter distributed to members and staff late last week, and I think again this morning, the petitioners strongly oppose the staff recommendation with regard to the area of election, and we urge the state board to call for an election only in the territory proposed for transfer. As the staff report notes, the statutory default area for the election is the territory proposed for transfer, and that default area was blessed by the California State Supreme Court, wherein its LAFCO decision, it noted that otherwise large, relatively disinterested majorities could effectively veto worthy reorganization efforts. That exact kind of pernicious voter dilution that the Supreme Court warned against will occur here under the proposed expanded boundaries. That's because under these expanded boundaries, the Sagebrush residents that CDE staff rightly acknowledges are most acutely impacted by this transfer, those residents, they would represent less than 4% of the total electorate. That simply cannot satisfy the rational basis review test that the Supreme Court established for evaluating the legal validity of election boundaries. The antithesis of irrational basis, in fact, is arbitrariness, but the staff report offers almost no explanation to justify these expanded boundaries. The report, as you just heard, notes that there is likely to be no significant impact on either district as a result of this transfer. It suggests that whatever impact there might be would be most acutely felt at the school site level, but of course, this is a completely unremarkable observation that would be true of every territory transfer. And then the report goes further, because it says that the election area shouldn't even just be contained to the attendance boundaries of these allegedly most impacted elementary schools, but should encompass the much larger attendance boundaries of the nearest high schools. Why? No explanation whatsoever is offered to justify that dramatic expansion, and it is significantly undermined by the report's own admission that whatever impacts are felt at the elementary school levels would be, quote, attenuated at the middle and high school levels. This just cannot carry the rational basis burden that is required of it. And that rational basis test is critical, both because the law requires it, but also because the law depends on it for these laws to make any sense, and I think this case is a perfect illustration of why that is. The Education Code has established, as you just heard, a very elaborate and multi-year process of review. It happens at the local level, the county level, and now here at the state level. These proposed boundaries, though, would reduce all of that to a single arbitrary question: which district has more voters? It cannot be that this 10-year-long process is meant to amount to just that. And remember, an election is called for in these cases in part because a district opposes the transfer. It would make a mockery of that entire statutory scheme to then put that electoral question disproportionately to the very district whose opposition triggered the election in the first instance. It would undermine all of the process that preceded it. It would serve just as a show election to codify GUSD's longstanding objections. We do not believe that the law supports such an absurd result. Now finally, perhaps the best evidence that we have that the proposed election boundaries do not comport with the law is that it would not comport with your long history of action on this issue. In fact, we could not find a single instance in which the state board has ever approved a territory transfer and then called for an election in an area other than the territory proposed for election, not one. And CDE staff is similar, they have a very similar consistency to their track record. It is extremely unusual for them to recommend that you call for an election in an expanded voting area, and when they have taken that unusual step, such as in the 2000 Alverd Unified case, the state board, you rejected that recommendation, you approved the transfer, but called for an election only in the territory proposed for transfer. Now I'll reiterate again, the staff report rightly notes that this transfer is unlikely to have any significant impact on either district sufficient to warrant opposing the transfer. So if the bare fact that nevertheless, whatever impacts might be felt would be felt most acutely at particular school site levels, if that garden variety fact is sufficient to abandon the default, the statutory default election area, then it's really not a default at all. In fact, it will never again be the correct voting area. You, the state board, will have to draw bespoke election boundaries in every territory transfer case, which would make each one of those vulnerable to extreme legal challenge. The eminently more defensible route is for you to do what you have done in an apparently unbroken record up until today, and that is to call for an election only in the area proposed for transfer, to call for an election only in the Sagebrush territory. So we strongly urge you to do just that. We appreciate your consideration, and you'll now hear from Superintendent Wendy Sonnet.
Good afternoon, esteemed board. My name is Wendy Sonnet, and I'm LCUSD Superintendent. The 1880s straight-line survey that led to the current district boundaries has long ceased to be meaningful. If the districts were being created today, one would never carve out a sliver of one city and align it with the neighboring district. Sagebrush families simply want to be fully vested members of their city and its schools, and to share completely in their community identity. And I want to thank Mr. Speaks and CDE for doing an absolutely amazing job with the nine criteria. They articulate it better than I've heard in the last almost 11 years. LCUSD has already enrolled more than 2/3 of the students estimated within the territory. We have 268 of the approximate 350 to 400 students. We are entirely prepared to accept any remaining students seeking to transfer with all related responsibilities and obligations. There are no capacity issues. Palm Crest Elementary has two unoccupied classrooms because of new construction, and there are over 125 additional students spaces available at that school. Additionally, at our other two elementary schools, there are over 100 spaces there and 150 spaces at La Cañada High School 712. Both districts throughout this process have already mitigated any and all potential financial impacts.
My name is Josh Epstein. I'm the governing board president for La Cañada Unified School District. LCUSD has actively supported the Sagebrush territory transfer throughout the 10-year negotiation, petition, and appeal process. Over the past decade, both districts have invested heavily in this process with countless hours of staff time and resources. Given that this conversation first began in 1963, history shows us that the momentum calling for a territory transfer by the Sagebrush residents will not dissipate. As seen by the sheer volume of written public comments in favor of the transfer, it's clear that this will resurface again and again, demanding the time, attention, and resources of all parties involved. At La Cañada Unified, we are incredibly proud of our program that facilitates the highest levels of learning while emphasizing inclusion, belongingness, wellness, equity, and access for all learners. Responsible stewardship necessitates district resources, fund, and support students and programs, not a continued territory transfer struggle that can be put to rest now. A vote today to deny the appeal and establish the Sagebrush territory as the sole voting area is paramount. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Boy, that was well timed. To the minute, whoa. Okay, Glendale Unified, you have a hard act to follow on the timing. Okay, that's great. We will now hear from the appellants from Glendale Unified, and you have 10 minutes. You may begin.
Good afternoon, esteemed state board members and staff. I am Sam Frankowitz, attorney for Glendale Unified School District. Glendale still asserts that conditions two through nine are not substantially met, but there is even a greater reason why SBE should grant Glendale's appeals. There is no educational need for this transfer. It is, in the Superior Court case of Bersh v. the SBE, which is in Exhibit 268, the court acknowledged that a compelling educational need is a rightful key consideration to justify a transfer. Indeed, SBE has relied upon this exact consideration in disapproving the Coachella USD transfer to Desert Sands USD, and that there was no compelling educational need for that transfer. Staff's recommendation for denial of Glendale's appeal can be summed up as best as saying it's better over there in La Cañada. This will create the, quote, "better over there precedent" that future petitioners will seize on en masse. On page three of the staff report, it states, "There are no compelling reasons to transfer the Sagebrush territory." Reasons, not even just education, but there are no compelling reasons. But then the staff also say, "There's no compelling local educational reason to justify overturning the county committee decision to approve the petition," in kind of a weird way of looking at that. At page 20 of Attachment one, staff claim that they're, in contradiction to what they just said, that there are compelling reasons for denying, there are compelling reasons for denying the appeal because essentially it's better over there. Yet staff write, again on page 18, that CDE finds no convincing academic need to support or deny this appeal. However, the sense of support and community identity for a transfer promises substantial benefits for the territory transfer students. In other words, it's better over there. As it's better over there precedent should not be approved by SBE. This would encourage parents to run to wherever it is better. That would be a terrible precedent. There's neither equity nor inclusion in that. SBE's goals should be to ensure all California students get a quality education, not to condone parents to flee to the best districts and leave the others to die on the vine. It is undisputed that both districts provide a quality, good education to their students. It is further undisputed that Sagebrush students are receiving quality education as consistently evident by the Sagebrush-serving schools. In Mountain Avenue Elementary, it's a 2023 California Distinguished School, a 2022 California Pivotal Practice Award recipient, and a 2020 Blue Ribbon School. Rosemont Middle School is a 2019 California Distinguished School, and Crescenta Valley High School is listed as one of the top five high schools, according to the U.S. News and World Report, and is a 2019 California Distinguished School. As SBE has consistently done so before, SBE should consider, continue to require, a clear showing of educational need to justify a disruptive and expensive transfer. There is no educational need for this transfer. Please do not abandon this important analytical talisman. It is undisputed that La Cañada Flint Ridge community has spurned Sagebrush GUSD students by denying them access to certain community benefits. That is not community identity. Further, SBE should not reward wrongdoers by transferring Sagebrush into a fold of such exclusionists. On page 16 of Attachment one, staff say there's no concrete evidence, quote, "concrete evidence" that the purpose of the petition is to raise property values. Of course, there would never be that concrete evidence, since Condition Eight expressly states that such a provision is disqualifying. No petitioner or petitioner would ever say the primary purpose is to increase its property values. It's the inferences from those circumstances that must be evaluated, and here it is quite And here, it is quite clear that petitioner's primary purpose is to raise property values in three distinct facts. 78% of the signatories did not have children in GUSD schools. 77% of the signatories did not even have children. And third, the Curtis Rosenthal appraisal report concluded that the transfer would contribute a substantial increase in property values. SBE, this board, should not limit its analysis to concrete facts, but the totality of the circumstances. And in this case, circumstances all point that the primary purpose is to raise property values. Glendale has a bi-trustee voting area system that are precisely balanced to maintain racial equality. If this transfer goes through, Glendale will then have to go through another timely rebalancing process to ensure racial equality throughout the district and their board elections. On the election area, if SBE denies the appeal, which I hope it doesn't, CDE recommends that the election area be the Sagebrush, the Crescenta Valley High School, and La Canyada High School attendance boundaries. This is definitely better than just the Sagebrush area. However, the area should be all of Glendale because it will be the remaining Glendale homeowners that will bear the bond indebtedness burden if Sagebrush transfers. The bond indebtedness will have to be paid by the remaining Glendale homeowners, and SBE should not endorse a scheme that is contrary to our founding fathers' cry of "no taxation without representation." There have been three attempts to transfer Sagebrush in the past. And then the most recent one in 1993, SBE granted GUSD's appeal over the staff's recommendation, and in similar fashion, we ask the same here. Lastly, please don't be swayed by the energy of petitioner's boisterous arguments. Please grant the district's appeal and deny the transfer. Thank you. Now I will turn it over to Glendale's board president, Jennifer Freeman.
Thank you. So as Stan said, I am Jennifer Freeman. I am the school board president for Glendale Unified School District, and I'm also the trustee area representative for the La Crescenta, Montrose, North Glendale, and Sagebrush area schools. I also happen to be a high school assistant principal and have spent my career in public education. And bottom line, there absolutely is no educational reason for this transfer. As a school district, our singular focus is what is best for our students. And this transfer absolutely does not improve educational opportunities for any of our students. Now, while both districts do provide a high-quality education, we've established that. Our Sagebrush families do have the value-added benefit of having a choice in school districts and a choice they'll lose if this transfer happens. So as you've already heard in terms of academics, we both offer rigorous instruction at award-winning schools. You know that our Sagebrush students are attending a series of Blue Ribbon and California Distinguished Schools, and they also have the opportunity in Glendale to attend our STEM-focused Magnet-Clark Magnet High School if they choose. We also have, last year at Crescenta Valley High School, we are very proud, so we have to take the opportunity, the LA County Teacher of the Year and a finalist for a California Teacher of the Year. So as a district, we do value choice, and we want every student to enroll in the program that best meets the needs and their interests regardless of their zip code. So we do proudly offer programs for every student. With our robust dual-immersion magnet and intra-district permit options, GUSD parents have the flexibility to send their children to the schools that best meet their needs. This commitment to supporting families and student choice is why our board voted in 2014 to allow a permissible boundary to all families living in the Sagebrush area. Any parent living in the territory who wants to send their child to La Canyada schools already has the option to do so. There is no need to change the district boundaries. Right now, the families in the Sagebrush area have the best of both worlds. They have a choice between two outstanding school districts and a wealth of instructional programs. Over the last 10 years, consistently, more than half the families living in the Sagebrush territory have chosen to remain in GUSD. And this year, we have 11 kindergarten families living in Sagebrush area. 10 of them have chosen their neighborhood school, Mountain Avenue Elementary, and one has chosen to move and enroll in La Canyada schools. So this transfer could set a dangerous precedent across the state as many school district boundaries are not contiguous with their city boundaries and serve multiple cities and unincorporated areas. In Glendale Unified, our current boundaries extend from the city of Glendale through unincorporated La Crescenta, Montrose, and the Sagebrush area of La Canyada. To allow this territory transfer petition to go through simply based on the fact that this area is located within the city boundaries of La Canyada sets a powerful precedent for the future territory transfers. So we are asking that you approve our appeal and deny the transfer. There is no educational reason for the transfer. It's not in the best interest of our students, and it does not fix any real problem. Instead, it reduces the options available to students, and it doesn't provide any additional benefit. Thank you very much for your time, and that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Ahead of the buzzer. Very helpful. And before we open the public comment, which is about to happen next, we're going to put the public comment slide up again. I'd like to start by clarifying some of the terminology just so that, to better understand the nature of the public comment, and we anticipate as well as to ensure that we understand what CDE is recommending the board do. Here, Glendale Unified has submitted an appeal asking the board to overturn the LA County Committee's approval of a transfer of territory from Glendale Unified to La Canyada Unified. If the board takes action to grant Glendale Unified's appeal, we are overturning the county committee's approval of the territory transfer, which means the transfer will be denied. There's sort of a double negative in the recommendation, so we just want to be sure everybody is clear about that. On the other hand, if the board takes action to deny Glendale Unified's appeal, we'll be approving the transfer of territory from Glendale to La Canyada Unified. And I'd also like to make an additional point. I'd like to start by thanking the members of the public for their high level of interest and engagement on this item. To date, we've received hundreds of written comments, many of which are thoughtful, have raised important issues and concerns. We very much want to hear from as many members of the public as we can. We also need to ensure that the board has sufficient time to deliberate and to carry out its business. So it is possible that pursuant to Title V Code of Regulations, Sections 9522 and 18463, depending on the length of public comment, we may end up asking public commenters to avoid repeating reasons for their positions that have already been stated and simply consider stating their position on the item, that they want us to either approve the appeal and reject the transfer or deny the appeal and approve the transfer. So we'll see how the public comment goes. And we certainly want to hear from as many people as possible. We want to hear the reasons and rationales for their thinking as much as possible as well. We're going to open the phone line for the public comment queue. Members of the public wishing to provide comment can do so in person or by calling the telephone number and using the participant access code on this slide. And in your comment, we encourage you, whether you're in person or calling in, to clarify whether you support the CDE recommendation to deny the appeal and support the territory transfer or that you do not support the CDE staff recommendation and ask that the appeal be granted so that we're very clear about the position each one of you is communicating. Are there speakers signed up in person?
There are 12 people signed up.
Terrific, thank you. Let's hear from them.
Please line up at the microphone as I call your name. Rick Gunter, Jean Hobson, Nick Karapetian, Scott Tracy, Stuart McKinney, and Eric Palladino.
Am I good? Okay.
Yeah, please.
Hello, I'm Rick Gunter, Mayor of the City of La Canyada-Flint Ridge. Our city council has often reaffirmed our support for this territory transfer, most recently at our joint city council district governing board meeting last month. I want to highlight one of the unanimously adopted resolutions and support. The territory transfer will result in increased involvement by residents of the subject area in La Canyada activities, events, organizations, and civic life. Our La Canyada civic and educational lives are interwoven. Our youth council is made up of students from all high schools in the city, which does not give the Sagebrush students the same opportunity. Our local newspaper includes stories and photos from each of the three elementary schools in the city, which implies that the Sagebrush students are not part of our community. Through our joint use agreements, the city and LCUSD have partnered to provide recreation opportunities to our families throughout the city, but the western edge of our city does not have fair representation here as they are outside the district. I urge you to support the territory transfer and deny this appeal. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeanie Hobson. I'm a Parks and Recreation Commissioner for the City of La Canyada. The GUSD arguments you have heard today are not new and rejected by both the county committee and the CDE. They were speculative at best in 2013 when over 360 territory students went to their schools. Since then, over 300 territory students have moved to La Canyada schools. Yet, GUSD has shown no evidence of real harm to their district or local schools. So how likely is it that there will be any measurable impact if at most 140 students possibly leave? Highly likely none. However, the benefits of a transfer to territory kids is substantial, as the CDE found. That, including the fact that Sagebrush would pay a new $500 parcel tax, means that they are the most impacted by a transfer and should be the only ones to vote. So please help end decades of conflict and uncertainty by denying the appeal and setting the election area to the territory alone. Thank you.
I'm Nick Karapetian, one of the chief petitioners of the territory transfer. My husband and I moved to Sagebrush 20 years ago because it was an inclusive and diverse community for us to raise our twins. Years later, when our kids were in GUSD elementary schools, we felt what other Sagebrush families had been feeling for decades. Our kids were on an island, and there was something missing from their education, having a true sense of belonging and being fully part of a community. During the last 10 years, a bridge of sorts, permits, has allowed a generation of territory kids, including ours, the opportunity to attend La Canyada schools and experience a community-enriched and inclusive education. The CDE saw this value to kids as tangible and important in the recommendations that were written up. They found a territory transfer promise substantial benefits to Sagebrush students. But that bridge is temporary, rickety, and not stable enough to support future generations of students of getting those benefits because permit policies can change at any time. So together, let's build a permanent bridge so Sagebrush students can always access substantial benefits. Please deny the appeal and set the election area for Sagebrush alone. Thank you.
I'm Scott Tracy, former La Canyada school board member. Glendale is the third-largest school district at LA County, 10 times our population, six times more students. CDE recommends you deny Glendale's appeal, but then reject LaFco's default election area with 1,600 Sagebrush voters for one with 30,000 Glendale voters. Why? Quoting CDE attendance concerns at the Glendale school site level. But today, only 2% of students at Glendale's Rosemont Middle and CV High School are Sagebrush residents, and Mountain Avenue Elementary enrollment remains stable. An expanded voting area would disenfranchise Sagebrush families who clearly have the most at stake due to a $500 parcel tax. There is no legitimate reason to expand this election area. With respect, please honor LaFco, consistent with your 2020 Wisburn election area decision, thereby limiting the voting area to Sagebrush families only. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stuart McKinney. I've lived in Sagebrush for 20 years with my husband, Nick, and our twins, who both graduated La Canyada High School and are now freshmen in college. So this transfer is less about my family, about our neighbors and future generations of Sagebrush kids. The LA County Committee took three years and had a diligent process before approving our petition. The CDE took 18 months to analyze the extensive facts and found that the transfer would substantially benefit Sagebrush children and recommends that you deny the appeal. However, studying an election in an area outside of Sagebrush with two-to-one odds of failure is inequitable and unjust. It would create unnecessary tension and division between the La Canyada and Glendale communities as it previously did during the county committee process. I was part of it, and it got a little ugly and hostile as Glendale spread baseless propaganda to scare their community about having to close schools and firing teachers. Please do not give the supermajority that surround us the power to decide our destiny. Deny the GUSD appeal and keep the election area to the territory only. Thank you.
Simplify, word of the day. Hi, I'm Eric Palladino, La Canyada-Sagebrush dad. My wife and I have three kids who have thrived and are compelled to remain in our local La Canyada school, Palm Crest Elementary, walking distance from our home. We love our school in Sagebrush, which is in La Canyada. Address, water, all La Canyada. To me, today, the most important thing will end up being the three voting area options the CDE gives you once this goes to a vote. So let's discuss them. Option one, I call this one "makes no sense" option. This option gives GUSD a two-to-one voting advantage, which would make no sense, being that Sagebrush, being that Sagebrush has a two-to-one student enrollment in La Canyada schools, not half or more, two-to-one. So for every three Sagebrush students, there are two that are currently in La Canyada schools. Why? Because Sagebrush is La Canyada. Then there is option two. This one, I call the "option," so let's just move on from this one. We obviously like the last option, option three, the option I call the "common sense" option, which only allows the people who actually live in the transfer area, Sagebrush, to vote on the transfer, hence the "common sense" option. I hope when we simplify and take a step back, you will all see it as the same way as we do. One city, one district. Thank you for your time.
There are six more speakers. Please line up as I call your name. Stephanie Fossen, Carolyn Anderson, David Greco, Ingrid Funnel, Darnika Watson, and James Cartel.
Thanks, Josh. Are we ready to begin? Yes, okay, great. Good afternoon. My name is Stephanie Fossen. I'm a 15-year resident of La Canyada, and I'm currently running for a seat on the La Canyada-Flint Ridge City Council. I'm hopeful that this board is now prepared to clarify the process by which this issue can finally be settled after lingering unresolved for more than 50 years. As I've spoken with voters in the course of my campaign, Sagebrush residents have often commented on the lack of community cohesion caused by the mismatch of the city and LCUSD borders. Giving these La Cañadans the opportunity to align their school and community lives is the right thing to do. As the board considers the appropriate voting area for this issue, I hope it will look at the desperately large effects this change would have on Sagebrush residents as compared to other stakeholders. Crescenta Valley High School is more than twice the size of La Cañada High School. Sagebrush votes should not be drowned out by those of others on whom this decision will have little impact. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Caroline K. Anderson. I'm the Vice President of the Board of Education of La Cañada Unified. I grew up in the Sagebrush area of La Cañada Flint Ridge. Having lived through the many petitions in the past, I'm grateful to the State Board of Education for recommending that the territory transfer be approved and moved to an election. But I implore you to ensure the election area only includes the most impacted by the territory transfer, the Sagebrush family. A broader election area would allow for skewed results, as Glendale voters outnumber La Cañada voters by 2-1. Currently, 75% of the school-aged students in Sagebrush attend LCUSD. It is clear that the families in Sagebrush have indicated they are citizens of the La Cañada Flint Ridge and identify with their city community. They share a familiar voice and have a dynamic synergy with their city neighbors, who help guide the priorities within LCUSD. I strongly recommend and urge that only the families in the Sagebrush area be the one to determine their own fate. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board President and Board Members. My name is David Greco, and I'm Chief Counsel of Glendale Unified School District, a resident of Glendale and a parent of GUSD. Your staff, I would urge that you reverse your staff recommendation and support the appeal of Glendale Unified. As your staff specifically recognizes, there are no compelling local educational reasons to justify overturning the County Committee decision to approve the transfer, and if you follow the staff recommendation, it seems pretty arbitrary for you to just transfer the territory, given that your staff itself is saying that there's no compelling need to do so. I continually hear the argument from the La Cañada folks that it's one city, one district, but your staff also recognized that in LA County, many school districts extend boundaries beyond one city. We also hear a lot about the fact that 200 students have already, or 200-plus students have already gained permits. That's because Glendale Unified has given them permits to release. There are still 200 students, at least, within the Sagebrush area that have not sought permits because they want to be at Mountain Avenue.
Good afternoon, Board President and colleagues. My name's Ingrid Ginnell. I'm a member of the Glendale Unified School District Board of Education, 25-year educator in Los Angeles Unified School District. And we've established here today that neither district has better outcomes educationally. They are very comparable. Neither district has denied on any extensive level permits going from Sagebrush students out of Glendale into La Cañada. But what I would like to highlight today is while people are focusing on the Sagebrush students and the Sagebrush territory, Glendale Unified, and this was presented during the staff report, has socio-economically disadvantaged student percentage of 42.1%, and La Cañada has a 5.3%. I always look at things from an equity and access point, as I did with you, Board Member.
Your time is up. Thank you, Speaker.
Good afternoon, Madam President, Madam Vice President, Board Members. I come before you as the new Superintendent of Glendale Unified School District, and at this moment, I'd like to honor my esteemed colleague's superintendent support. Thank you, Wendy Sennett. So I'd just like to share a few words. While proponents of the transfer argue for options and flexibility, it's crucial to consider the broader implications. GUSD does not plan to close any schools, and instead, it's exploring alternatives to boost enrollment in the La Crescenta area, allowing parents in certain areas to choose their preferred school as one such option. No students would be compelled to change schools. In light of these facts, opposing the proposed territory transfer is in the best interest of GUSD, its students, and the community. It is essential to protect the district's financial stability, maintain educational continuity for students, and ensure that our special services remain unaffected. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jim Carton, and I am the Principal of La Cañada High School and the parent of two students who graduated from Crescenta Valley High School. I believe in neighborhood schools and believe the fabric of communities is strengthened when students residing in a city can attend their local high school. La Cañada High School is the local high school of the students residing in the Sagebrush area. It is evident that families and students have voted with their feet by coming to us in great numbers. This mode of action needs to be affirmed by the State Board of Education, and you can accomplish this by reconsidering your position regarding the voting territory, allowing the residents of Sagebrush and only Sagebrush to their due process rights in deciding what is best for their kids. The numerous students that have come to us from the Sagebrush share a common experience of finding at LCHS a school that is smaller in number and richer in opportunities and programs, having success in the classroom and on teams and in clubs. Importantly, all the resources of the city of La Cañada focus at LCHS, and I want to thank you for your time.
There is no more public comment in the room.
Do you have a shift on the phone, please?
Sure. Caller ending in 3917, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
I'm Catherine Chang, a resident of Sagebrush with a child who attends La Cañada schools. My family has a profoundly compelling educational reason to attend LCUSD schools. Community identity and civic participation in my hometown community is a significant element of our kids' education. Secondly, LCUSD is extremely diverse, and we appreciate the robust DEI policies of LCUSD. 30% of the population is Asian-American, and Asian-Americans are people of color, so we are racial/ethnic minorities. Finally, if GUSD voters are allowed to outnumber La Cañada voters, then we would, in effect, be silenced and our votes usurped. This unbalanced voter area would be the very antithesis of fair and equitable and would contradict the enlightened, democratic values espoused by the CDE. Good, fair public policy demands an election area encompassing only Sagebrush. Finally, as for the new LCUSD parcel tax accompanying the transfer, we Sagebrush families would be the only people subject to the tax. So why should any other demographic be allowed?
Your time is up. Next caller ending in 9691, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Nalani Lazowitz, co-petitioner. 150 years ago, Rancho La Cañada was split into lots. It was a checkerboard of straight lines, saving the expense of surveying up the steep natural boundary of Pickens Canyon. There were no families here. It was Sagebrush. And that line has been a source of confusion and conflict for decades, dividing neighbors on the same block and even running through the middle of some homes. I'm a proud and active Democrat, and civic engagement has been my primary objective in this campaign. We have about 1,600 registered voters in Sagebrush. If you permit tens of thousands of unaffected voters in nearby Glendale, La Crescenta, and Montrose to vote on our petition, their numbers would overwhelm and delegitimize the election. Please listen to the residents, oppose the appeal, and set the voting area as the default in these cases: the transfer area only. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next caller ending in 4054, please start your public comment.
Hello, my name is David Paskowitz, and I'm an educator and parent in the La Cañada Unified School District. I strongly oppose Glendale's appeal and wholeheartedly support the territory transfer of the Sagebrush neighborhood of the city of La Cañada Flint Ridge to the La Cañada Unified School District, and we should be united. Sagebrush is home to members of our own community. Our students participate in the same neighborhood sports leagues, enjoy the same community center, worship in the local churches together. It only makes sense for them to attend the same outstanding schools. I encourage the SBE to unite our city, to provide our children with the community education that they deserve by aligning the school district with the natural connections that already exist. And if this does come to a vote, it should only include the residents of the Sagebrush neighborhood, not the wider and lopsided region of the Crescenta Valley High School area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller ending in 8964, please start your public comment.
Yes, this is Pat Anderson. Another key factor benefit of a transfer would be enhanced safety.
Oops, she dropped off. Please call back in. Next caller ending in 9864, please start your public comment.
Hi, I'm Roger DeLol. My family, with three young children, we live in Sagebrush with one of them attending LCUSD on a permit. I oppose the GUSD appeal and support the Sagebrush territory transfer to LCUSD. I've seen firsthand how disruptive it is for students residing in our La Cañada neighborhood community to not fully be part of it, as they currently don't have the right to attend their community-focused hometown schools. This also impacts their ability to fully participate in some of our town's extracurricular activities due to conflicting timing and lack of familiarity with the rest of the children. The challenges directly influence their comfort level, their confidence, and desire to be part of those activities. Our eldest son has flourished academically at LCUSD, which I attribute to the excellent educational environment fostered by LCUSD. Our sincere hope is that our other two children also will become part of the La Cañada school system to have a similar childhood experience filled with wonderful community involvement and extraordinary educational environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in 2528, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Riley Single. As a parent of three children who attend LCUSD in the Sagebrush district, we were permitted in. My children are thriving and excelling at their schools. They are now fully part of the community that they live in, and it does not make any sense for them not to be allowed to go to the La Cañada schools. Please deny the appeal and only allow Sagebrush residents to vote, because it impacts these families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in 3200, please start your public comment.
Annie Wang Polisco. As a Sagebrush resident who also works and volunteers on La Cañada, I ardently support transfer and denial of the appeal. This is not about property values. We aren't looking to move. We're looking to stay and thrive. My Asian-Mexican-American children attend La Cañada schools on treasured permits. Transferring local students to a capable district with capacity that has already been doing an excellent job of teaching the majority of them for many years is just practical. If there must be a line drawn as to the election area, it should be drawn where the impact is greatest. At the least, it should not be drawn to predetermine the outcome based on the disparity in size of the two districts. I submit there is no clearer show of community than a decades-long common goal supported by the city, schools, and residents and passed on from neighbor to neighbor. Individual families may move in and out of the city, but the desire to unify the city and schools is a constant. I urge you to deny the appeal and let the transfer proceed using the default election area. Thank you.
Next caller ending in 3528, please start your public comment.
My name is Deborah Craddock. I attended Palm Crest Elementary School, graduated from La Cañada High School, and am now the Assistant Superintendent for La Cañada Unified. The CDE's report explicitly recognizes the positive impact of a transfer on the sense of community identity for Sagebrush students. This echoes our deeply held belief that the transfer is not merely a shift in school districts, but rather nurturing an environment where each student feels included in our thriving community. As an alum, I can affirm La Cañada is a close-knit familial community, and attending La Cañada schools should be an inherent right for Sagebrush families as they live within the city we serve. I support the CDE's recommendation to deny the appeal. However, the suggested voting area would result in disproportionate representation, with Glendale voters outnumbering La Cañada 2-1. This imbalance tilts the scale unfairly against La Cañada, jeopardizes a fair outcome at the polls, and diminishes the voices of the Sagebrush voters to those of the larger community who are not directly impacted by the transfer. I urge the SBE to uphold the transfer and designate the Sagebrush territory as the rightful voting area. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next caller ending in 6211, please start your public comment.
Thank you. My name is Floyd Walters. I'm a longtime Sagebrush citizen, and I strongly suggest that you deny the appeal by Glendale and allow the transfer to take place. And then, please make my vote a part of a fair and equitable election and make the Sagebrush area alone that of us that will be affected, the voters. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, caller. Next caller ending in 6211, also, please start your public comment.
Hi, my name is Blaine Baggett. I'm the resident of the Sagebrush area. I speak to you from the perspective of having formerly served as the Director of Communications and Education for a sizable aerospace institution in this area, as well as having a son who attended elementary, as an elementary student, the Mountain Avenue School, where I'm proud to say he was a student body president and later graduated from La Cañada High School. I am asking you to deny the appeal and choose option number three. The schools, both educational experiences, were excellent. That's not the issue. I think, as a parent, I get to choose where I want my son to go to school, not Glendale. Please, proximity is the ability to have a better educational experience, and I ask that you think about that as if this was a decision you were making about your own child. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in 2671, please start your public comment.
Chris Kilpatrick, Crescenta Valley Town Council President. Our entire community is almost unanimously against the transfer of the Sagebrush area. More particularly, one thing to bring to light is the fact that if this transfer occurs, an additional property tax burden will be placed on the entire city of Glendale and the unincorporated area, which I represent, that is presently served by Glendale Unified School District. So at minimum, even if the transfer is approved by the board today, the election area should not be any of the three options. It should be the entire area served by Glendale Unified School District, because they are all affected by this. If that entire area is not included, they will effectively be taxed without ever having any say in the matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller ending in 1979, please state your name and affiliation. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller ending in 1979, please start your public comment. Next caller ending in 3814, please start your public comment.
Hi, my name is David Santiago Speck. I'm the principal here at Palm Crest Elementary School, which is the direct school that most of the Sagebrush students do attend. I'm in full support of the transfer of Sagebrush from the Glendale Unified School District to the La Cañada Unified School District, and I would like you to deny the appeal of Glendale Unified School District. These families live just minutes away from my school and are such an integral part of our community. Students in that Sagebrush territory participate in extracurricular activities, athletics, scouting, fine arts, playdates, all of that, and by fully joining our community as a whole in all aspects, we can further foster an environment where children thrive and are supported by the strength of the communal purpose and shared objectives of the community of La Cañada. So I'd really like for us to embrace the vision of a unified community dedicated to the advancement of our schools, and together, we will pave the way for a future where Sagebrush becomes an integral part of LCUSD and is given the right as La Cañada zip code to attend La Cañada schools. So we really appreciate your taking the time to listen to this, and please, oppose the appeal.
Thank you. Your time is up. Next caller ending in 8964, please start your public comment.
Yes, this is Pat Anderson, a Sagebrush resident. Another key benefit of the transfer would be enhanced safety during emergency or catastrophic events. Pickens Canyon is a formidable natural barrier that creates physical separation between the territory and GUSD schools. The very location and geography of the territory makes it subject to a whole host of natural disasters and challenges to first responders. Communications and coordination affecting student safety would also be streamlined with a unified city-school-district response plan. In terms of access, Glendale's local elementary school has limited direct access to and from the territory via a single footbridge, while there are multiple access paths from within the territory to the local La Cañada Elementary School. Therefore, for this reason and many others, I ask you to please deny the appeal and support the election area to be Sagebrush only. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in 8300, please start your public comment.
Caller ending in 8300, please begin. Next caller ending in 2536, please state your name and affiliation. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name's Tassie Rip Bennett. I am a resident of the Sagebrush area. I have a young daughter. She goes to school at a La Cañada school, and I have a baby, who I hope will also attend a La Cañada school. We moved here because we wanted to be a part of the community and a part of the great schools, and we really hope that you deny the appeal and support the transfer so that we can be an integral part of the community and that, you know, my daughter, who's only nine months old, will have the same opportunities that her sister has: being able to walk to her local school and, you know, being a part of the community and having friends that she lives next door to and goes to school with. So really appreciate you hearing me, and please support the transfer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in 6523, please begin your public comment.
I'm Bob Laszowicz, a 20-year Sagebrush resident. I oppose the appeal with the default voting area determined. As to a compelling educational need, I refer to a broad research review by Henderson and MAP that found a significant positive correlation between school, family, and community involvement and student success. As others have shared, La Cañada is extremely supportive of its district students. I don't feel a connection to the community of Glendale or unincorporated LA County. I doubt those residents are qualified to determine what is best for the students and residents of the Sagebrush area. Not one non-official of Glendale has even spoken here today. In the spirit of local self-determination and appropriate community participation, please deny the appeal and set the default voting area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in 1449, please start your public comment.
Hello, esteemed members of the board. I'm Donald Voss, former mayor and councilmember of La Cañada Flint Ridge. I urge the board to help unite our city by denying the appeal, and I also urge that the election voting area be confined to the directly affected Sagebrush transfer area. To expand voting beyond the Sagebrush would run the metaphorical risk of having two foxes and one chicken vote on what's for dinner. Thank you.
What? It's quite a metaphor.
Thank you. Next caller ending in 0993, please start your public comment.
Hi, I'm Jeff Wilson, and I'm a longtime resident of La Cañada Flint Ridge and presently a homeowner in Sagebrush. I'm also a CV Falcon, graduated in 1977. Both my kids, hate to say that, but both my kids attended La Cañada public schools from kindergarten through 12th grade. I fully support the territory transfer, because I've seen firsthand the greater sense of community and belonging that is enriched by children.
Next caller ending in zero nine nine three, please start your public comment.
Hi, I'm Jeff Wilson, and I'm a longtime resident of La Cuenyata Flintridge and presently a homeowner in Sagebrush. I'm also a CV Falcon, graduated in 1977. Both my kids, hate to say that, but both my kids attended La Cuenyata public schools from kindergarten through 12th grade. I fully support the territory transfer because I've seen firsthand the greater sense of community and belonging that is enriched by children's education. Glendale talks about there being no difference in education. That might be true, but this is about community and kids going to school and their community. Unlike 90% of La Cuenyata and all of Locer Center, which is part of Glendale, we in Sagebrush, which is West La Cuenyata, we're not able to fully participate with our community at this time. I recommend you deny the appeal so all of La Cuenyata, including Sagebrush, can have the same benefit. As a transfer would result in additional $500 parcel tax for Sagebrush, then we Sagebrush only should be the people voting on this transfer. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next caller ending in five two nine six, please start your public comment.
Good afternoon, this is Jennifer Kratz. I live in Sagebrush and I support the territory transfer. I've heard a lot of comments saying that there's no educational need for this transfer, but I have two words for the board to consider, and that's class size. I have a senior at CV, which is in Glendale, and I have a freshman at La Cuenyata, and have had the ability to see the two side by side. While I love the teachers at CV, the class size is just too big. I wish that my senior had a smaller classes so that he could have had more quality time with his teachers, while my daughter at La Cuenyata is enjoying classes that are often half the size of CV. Every kid that leaves CV for La Cuenyata is going to reduce the class size at CV, so I don't understand why there would be opposition from the Locer Center parents to kids leaving for La Cuenyata. And I can tell you that in just the first semester at La Cuenyata, I was able to get meetings with my kids' teachers, the counselor, the vice principal, the principal when issues about classes, illness, social drama have come up with my daughter, and I've never been able to get that at CV because they just don't have the resources.
Next caller ending in two nine one one, please start your public comment.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Nicole Kersberg. I'm a Sagebrush resident and a parent of two children, one of whom is a rising transitional kid or partner. I agree with the recommended denial of the GUSD appeal and approve, I support approval of the territory transfer. I'm calling in specifically to speak to the potential election area. I sincerely hope you will honor and follow the precedent and default of the election area set for prior territory transfers by setting this election area to the affected Sagebrush territory only, the default and most appropriate choice, giving voice to the students and families who will be directly affected by the parcel tax and on a daily basis at school by this decision. Thank you.
I'm going to, at this point, simply let folks know that we're going to allow public comment until 5:10 and ask that, as we've heard of very thoughtful rationales from people as they've been commenting, that folks, you know, let us know their position, and if their reasons are similar to those that have been stated, we can move on to the next caller so we get as many of them as possible in. There's been some concern that maybe some people are calling back in who've already called, so we do want to ask that if you have called once, we appreciate that and we feel like we will have heard your comments. So, we'll continue with public comment until 5:10 and ask people to be as expeditious as possible.
Thank you. Next caller ending in eight three nine five, please state your public comment.
Good afternoon. My name is Anna Iswin, and I'm the Associate Superintendent of Educational Services in La Cuenyata and former Palm Crest principal. I have been at LCUSD for 18 years and have realized the impact of this tight-knit community on student success. Research has shown that when students feel safe, valued, and connected to their school community, they are more likely to develop a strong sense of belonging, which in turn contributes to their well-being. In a small high school like LCHS, each student knows all classmates and staff and is known by their name. Our survey data prior to COVID-19 showed 74% of our students feeling a sense of belonging versus 42% of 9th to 12th graders in Glendale USD. A strong sense of belonging in school has also been linked to better mental health and well-being. When students feel connected to their school and peers, they're less likely to feel stress, anxiety, and depression. In conclusion, LCUSD fosters a greater sense of belonging among students, which has far-reaching positive effects on their educational, education, and well-being. Please deny the appeal and approve the transfer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller ending in three zero zero zero, please start your public comment. Caller ending in eight three nine seven, please start your public comment.
My name is Karen Hurley, and as the former principal of Palm Crest Elementary, I had the opportunity to serve several students and families from the La Cuenyata community, including the Sagebrush neighborhood. I oppose Glendale Unified's appeal and strongly advocate for the unification of the Sagebrush territory with La Cuenyata Unified. The Sagebrush community already within La Cuenyata boundaries boosts a strong connection with the community through active participation in our local schools, organizations, sports, leagues, churches, and various communal activities. Residents of Sagebrush fully engage in the La Cuenyata Flintridge community as well as the La Cuenyata Unified School District and contribute to the cultural and social fabric of the city. We all know that students flourish when they are surrounded by peers with shared experiences and aspirations, and La Cuenyata Unified provides precisely that environment for our Sagebrush students. I wholeheartedly ask that you consider the welfare and future of Sagebrush students supporting their unification with La Cuenyata Unified. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in six six one zero, please limit your comment to stating your position only.
I ask that you deny the GSU appeal and vote for the default election zone. My name is Jamie LuSatter, and I'm the Associate Superintendent of Tech Services for La Cuenyata Unified and former resident and student at La Cuenyata High. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in two one two two, please limit your comment to stating your position Caller ending in two one two two, would you like to state your position? Next caller ending in three eight seven nine, please state your position.
Yes, hello, my name is Andrew Roach. I live in Sagebrush, and my position is to deny the Glendale Unified School District appeal, to fully support the recommendation of CDE, and to compliment this CDE staff member who gave us first presentation day, which was phenomenal, and ask also that the board follow a rational basis and limit the election only to the Sagebrush territory as that contains the residents who are most materially impacted by any transfer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in two zero two two, please state your name and affiliation for the record, and please limit your comment to stating your position only.
Hi, my name is Jamie Lee Palladino. I am the mom of three children in Sagebrush, and I strongly oppose the, I oppose the GUSD appeal and support the territory transfer. And should we go to a vote, I request the vote be confined to the Sagebrush area only, and I would just like to highlight there are only La Cuenyata parents here speaking and Sagebrush residents speaking because we care so deeply about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in four seven eight five, please limit your comment to stating your position only.
My name is Eileen Bergman. I'm a resident of Sagebrush. I grew up in GUSD from K to 12, and I ask you to deny the appeal and uphold the transfer.
Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I have two kids on permit in the La Cuenyata School District, and we are talking about education primarily, and I think you got clarity that there is an advantage, but we have not talked about the entire well-being of the child that's really critical here in such a small-knit community. So please, I'm hoping that you deny the appeal by Glendale.
Thank you. Next caller ending in four nine zero two, please limit your comment to stating your position only.
My name is Kaitra Puglia, and I am a La Cuenyata Flintridge community member, a former school board member, and a 25-plus-year professor of education, child development and learning theory at the local community college. I support the denial of the appeal and support the transfer. I also would ask that the election and the establishment of the election in the Sagebrush territory be only for the residents in that area. This is a small community, and the comments that I was going to make have already been stated, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller ending in eight seven six zero, please state your position.
Hello, I'm Christine Benito, the very proud principal of Christina Valley High School and a parent of three CV Falcons. I'm in support of the appeal, and I just want to, I guess, put an exclamation point on the fact that there is no educational reason for the transfer, and I also want to state my position as a board member of the CV Chamber of Commerce, that I know firsthand the inclusion that occurs between both communities. We support La Cuenyata every year. I have students who participate in their turkey trot, and they support our Oktoberfest and our Mantras Parade and Hometown Country Fair. We go to the same meetings together, we work together, we love each other. Our communities are together all the time, and I want to continue to support my Sagebrush students, as do all of my other feeder principals. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next caller ending in five six one nine, please state your name and affiliation as well Next caller ending in six one two two, please state your position.
Hi, yes, my name is Melissa Greenwood, and I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations for LCUSD. I support that we deny GUSD's appeal and set the voting area to Sagebrush territory only. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in five three one nine, please state your name and affiliation as well as your position.
My name is Jaclyn Scott, and I am the proud principal of Mountain Avenue Elementary School. Many families that live in Sagebrush choose to attend Mountain Avenue as we are a neighborhood school. We offer such a great, robust academic learning experience. We urge you, I urge you, to strongly approve GUSD's appeal. There is no academic reason for a transfer of territory. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next caller ending in five one one four, please state your position.
My name is Reiner Alvinician, and I support CDE's recommendation of denying Glendale's appeal and support the transfer. I'm resident in the territory of Sagebrush in the city of La Cuenyata, and I'm also a parent of Nicholas, a second grader currently attending a La Cuenyata Unified School District Elementary less than a quarter mile away from our home. My daughter Ella will be of elementary age next year, and my wife and I are deeply concerned that Ella will not be able to attend the same elementary school as my son next year. There has been many instances in recent years that siblings have been forced to attend different schools in different districts due to an antiquated transfer petition required by GUSD. Our family moved to La Cuenyata five years ago for the La Cuenyata School District, and I am heavily involved in numerous organizations in La Cuenyata and sit on the PTA board for my son Nicholas's school. Now just imagine, your home is in a small sliver of La Cuenyata called Sagebrush. Your son takes part in the La Cuenyata Little League, your daughter is a Girl Scout at the local La Cuenyata chapter, but you're not certain that your daughter will be able to attend school in La Cuenyata due to an out-of-date transfer requirement from the 1960s. In addition, I am not allowed to cast a local vote for any matters related to LCUSD due to being in Sagebrush.
Thank you. Your time is up. Next caller ending in three seven three seven, please limit your comment to stating your position only.
Good afternoon, my name is Dan Jeffries. I'm a La Cuenyata resident and member of the school board. I support the recommendation to deny Glendale's appeal. I strongly disagree with the recommendation to expand the voting area beyond the Sagebrush territory. I urge you to uphold and defend the constitutional rights of the Sagebrush residents by setting a rational and fair voting area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in five five four nine, please limit your comment to stating your position only.
My name is Christina Tootson. I live in the Sagebrush area, and I have two children who started out in Glendale Unified because we had, didn't have a permit to La Cuenyata. They are now in La Cuenyata and have been so for many years. I strongly support the territory transfer, and I oppose Glendale's appeal. There's significant precedent for that, and I encourage and urge CDE to follow precedent and limit the voting area as they have done in Whiteburn in other cases and as required by legal precedent to limit the voting area only to Sagebrush. That's the only rational decision. Otherwise, all of the work and all of the decisions that have been occurring and input will be completely undone and not considered because of the imbalance in voting constituencies.
Thank you. Next caller ending in six four four four, please state your name and affiliation as well as your position.
Current parent and resident of the Sagebrush area. My name is Ludwig Minassium. My daughters attend PCR. I am in complete favor of denying the appeal and limiting the voting area to the residents that are affected by this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in zero eight six six, please state your name and affiliation as well as your position.
Hi, my name is Ashley Min. I am a resident of the Sagebrush area who had changed to Rosemont Middle School in eighth grade, and that was really difficult for me as I was new to the community, and I ask that you deny the appeal and support the transfer, limit election to Sagebrush only.
Thank you. Next caller ending in eight three four three, please state your name and affiliation as well as your position.
Hello, my name is Carrie Hetzel. I'm the principal at Paradise Canyon Elementary School in La Cuenyata. I ask you to deny the appeal, and I strongly support the territory transfer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller ending in seven nine zero nine, please state your name and affiliation as well as your position.
I'm Tiara Nappi. My family and I have lived in La Cuenyata for 25 years, raised our three daughters since birth, two in college, one still at La Cuenyata High School, straight A student. One thing that hasn't been addressed yet is the bullying that goes on with kids that are from different areas. My oldest daughter was bullied when she was attending Mountain Avenue School, and my second daughter was told that she was going to have to repeat the third grade, and then once transferred, the bullying stopped, and my one daughter advanced on to fourth grade, and my girls are all thriving and doing well in college and getting straight A's. So, if you say that it doesn't affect their education and their mental health, it certainly does, and we need to keep our kids in Sagebrush, and I ask that you deny the appeal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks to everyone who's called in. It is 5:10 or a little after, and we do need time to deliberate, and I think we've benefited from hearing all of the comments, and I appreciate everyone who has called in and shared their views. So, given that we are going to move on, I'm going to close the public hearing at 5:10 PM, and I'm going to ask our liaison, Member Escobedo, if he would like to make some initial comments.
Yes, we'd like to make some initial comments. One, I really appreciate our staff's work on these very difficult matters, right? Going through nine conditions and researching all of them, and I just really appreciate your fine work. I really appreciate Glendale's staff in La Cuenyata coming here and presenting each side. Definitely appreciate all the community members, you know, preponderance from La Cuenyata who came in, and it is evident to me that, you know, Sagebrush is a very close-knit community, and I really think I'm ready to conduct a couple of motions, if that's okay. And I would like to motion to deny the appeal. I think I've heard enough evidence from both sides that I feel the appeal from Glendale should be denied.
Why don't we, I appreciate your... Separating the two issues, I think that's a good idea. So, we'll take this in two separate motions, one motion on whether to deny the appeal, and then we'll come back to the question of the voting area. Do I have a second on that motion? Member Olken, thank you. Any further discussion of the motion? We'll open that up, yes. Member Yashimono Tari.
Thank you, Member Escobedo. I also appreciate everyone who came out today and who submitted a written comment, and being, having, having grown up in the Los Angeles, greater Los Angeles area, and I have deep respect for both communities. The, I do have a few questions, though, and this is not about any person or any particular thing a person said, but more about the process, and I was wondering if staff could answer a few questions for me. I understand that in 2016, the county committee discussed each of the nine criteria, and although staff recommendation was, had found five criteria not met, that the county committee found that a criteria seven was not, was not met in 2017, excuse me. And then, I understand that in 2019, the same committee conducted a vote but didn't vote on each criteria. So, can you explain the... So can you explain the delay of the two years? And, and I'm asking about this, I know the handbooks suggest that each criteria be voted upon separately, but there were two other times that the county committee saw this in 1979 and 1991 and I'm curious to know if we know the county committee voted by each criteria in those other two instances. I'm looking for consistency and precedent.
Yes, so first of all, to discuss the most recent petition and what happened at the county committee level. In, in 2017, as you noted, the staff report found four conditions met, found five conditions not met. There was, there was pretty robust discussion among the county committee members and they took what they later described as a series of advisory votes, but I will say that in my own, you know, review of that hearing, it was not entirely clear, it was not made entirely clear that those were intended to be advisory votes at the time. So they went through, they voted. In that case of the nine criteria, the county committee had a majority in support of finding eight out of the nine met. There was, there was some pretty robust discussion about, about those, those different criteria and there were several of them where, where, you know, there were board members who did not think that they were met. So the discussion was very thorough, but as part of that discussion, they raised some additional questions that they wanted staff to go back and look into. And it was because of those additional questions for staff that they then, you know, didn't take a final action and deferred. And so that large gap of time that you see is because county committee staff were sort of, you know, looking into some of those additional issues. So when it came back, they, they did vote sort of on, on all nine criteria at once, which again, our handbook is purely sort of an advisory resource. We make it very clear in the handbook that we're not telling county committees or school districts how they have to operate. We're just giving them sort of the benefit of experience that the department has gained over the years. In terms of the two previous or three previous petitions, we actually did a lot of research and were unable to find really good records on those previous petitions. So unfortunately, I can't tell you whether there were separate votes on any of those.
If I could just add really quickly because I think it's really helpful background, but I wanted just to remind the board that while helpful, you don't need to take that into consideration for your vote today and you do not need to find all the nine criteria to be substantially met or not to take action to approve or deny. So it doesn't have to be all of them.
Thank you for the clarity and thank you for your amazing historical knowledge.
Where it's relevant for me is I had read in the materials that the SBE had denied, had, sorry, approved the appeal. So had denied the transfer the last time it came to the board and that the reason was racial equity, which I believe is criteria four. And also in the notes, it said condition four was not discussed in 2019 at the county committee. And we didn't have the specific data for Mountain View. The last time, when we have appeals like this, usually at the district aggregate level, you don't see much change in the racial disparity because it's, the N is so big, the number of students is so big, but it's at the student, at the school level where we see larger changes in the racial disparity. And so I think somebody said 25% Mountain View students were students of color, 25% were white students, but the N's are also important because 25% of four is one student and 25% of 100 is 25 students. So I, I'm, I'm asking these questions for some of that context, particularly given that this has been such a long, you know, on the, on the table for so long and also that I haven't seen these type of territory transfers, rarely have they been this large and also rarely have they ever, actually I'm not aware of any that have gone from a place where they would actually lose, medium home income would actually be reduced. So I have those questions and specifically about that.
If it would be helpful, I can, I have the numbers for the student demographics at Mountain View, I can grab those and let, let you know what they are.
That would be great. And do you want to do that first or do you want to take another question first? If one of you can get the demographic data while the other one answers the next question, that would be a very efficient way to proceed if we could do that. And I have another quick question that's also just a matter of fact and then I'll go to Member Patillo Bronson who has a question. My recollection of the documents that we read on this case was that there was a guarantee that if the transfer were permitted to move forward, that La Cañada would be allowing permits for anyone who wanted to go to Glendale in perpetuity. Did I read that correctly?
Yes. La Cañada has, their board took an action to state that normally an inter-district transfer is good for one year and has to be renewed and that they would grant inter-district transfers for sort of the lifetime of the student in their schools.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be sure because there were different things said about that. Member Patillo Bronson and then we'll come back to your question, Member Yoshimoto Tari.
So I have two questions. One is on criteria four that we were just discussing. The slide referenced, the reorganization of the districts will preserve each affected district's ability to educate students in an integrated environment and will not promote racial or ethnic discrimination or segregation. I think the data that you provided was really helpful on the racial breakdowns. One of the commenters, Ingrid Grinnell, mentioned the larger sort of difference however in the socioeconomics of the two districts. So within that criteria listed, is it relevant to think of an integrated environment as being socio-economically integrated as well as racially integrated?
So I'd like to draw a distinction here between what is required by statute and then the authority of the state board. So what is required by statute? The statute focuses on race and ethnicity. However, as we've said here, the state board can go beyond the nine criteria. And so if you have concerns about, you know, socioeconomic disparities, you absolutely have the authority to factor those into your deliberation.
The, the second related question is around the parcel tax that's been mentioned a couple of times and I couldn't find any reference. I just did a keyword, keyword search in the documents that we have around the $500 parcel tax. And if you could just, is that an existing parcel tax? Is that something that is on the ballot to come? Is that, people have made reference to it, but I just want to know what that is.
I'm not certain what that reference to. It was not something that came up in our conversations with the districts involved. It sounded, from what I was hearing from public comment, like it is a parcel tax that the folks that are in the Sagebrush territory would have, you know, imposed on them if they were to move over into the new district. In our analysis, what we looked at was what costs would be shifted onto the remainder of the Glendale School District. And that was, you know, in my presentation, I referenced about a 1.85, right, just under 2% increase in their, their bond repayments, which is not a set amount, that's a, it's a specific dollar amount per 100,000 of assessed value. So it's going to rise and fall based on the value of your home. But as far as that $500 parcel tax, I'm not sure what that was a reference to.
But the $2 million is a reference to bond indebtedness that's already been undertaken by Glendale Unified.
The $2 million is a reference to the LCFF funding. You know, LCFF funding is on a per-student basis and so based on that estimate of about 210 students, they would lose about $2 million in LCFF revenue.
And my recollection is that that would be the maximum if everybody moved. Is that right? Yeah. Before we go to any other comments, questions, I do want to see if we have the demographic data that was requested available now.
Yes, so I believe you'd asked about Mountain Avenue specifically. Mountain Avenue is currently 55.1% white students and that comes out to 306 students. And then the next largest demographic group would be Asian students. They're 19.6% of the population, that's 109 total students. Hispanic students would be the next largest population group, that's 15.1% at 84 students. I don't know if you need me to go further down the list, but, but the idea is that 25%, you know, minority students, 25% white students would end up being roughly equivalent numbers because white students make up just over half of the population at that school.
And that's a school in Glendale?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Yes, Vice President Glover Woods.
This is also a numbers question and I believe in your presentation, you verbally said something about this. When we're looking at demographics, school to school, you just gave us some numbers for Mountain View. I thought in your presentation, there was a comparison of Palm Crest to Mountain View with socioeconomic as well as ethnicity. Did I understand that correctly in your presentation?
I didn't compare the two schools directly. I just noted that while there's, you know, a stark socioeconomic difference, if you look district to district, if you look at just the high school in Glendale, because, you know, the high school attendance area sort of encompasses the middle and elementary school areas, that's why I chose high school, that socioeconomic difference is, is cut roughly in half. So it's still there, you know, it's still a significant difference, but the demographics of that sort of eastern portion of Glendale Unified that's, that's bordering on La Cañada, the demographics start to look a lot more similar to the demographics of La Cañada itself.
Okay, so it was a high school comparison. The high school in Glendale and the high school in La Cañada. That was the comparison?
It was...
No.
La Cañada is a one high school district. So when you're, when you're comparing sort of the La Cañada numbers overall, the demographics of the high school match the district fairly well because it's, you know, one high school in the district because it's such a small district. But if you compare those to the demographics of the nearest high school in Glendale, that's where you see them starting to mesh up.
Thank you for the clarification.
I could just clarify one additional point. It sounded like the demographics for the elementary schools that are nearby are even more similar.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you. All right. Did that answer your question?
Just two super, super quick ones. One is several, or commenters talked about safety. If Sagebrush residents are in La Cañada city proper, then fire and police are not Glendale? Or are they all county?
They...
First responders in an emergency?
Yes, so if, if there was a, an emergency in the Sagebrush community, those would be La Cañada first responders. However, there are no schools in the community itself. The nearest Glendale schools are in unincorporated county area, so I believe those would be county first responders if there was an incident on campus.
Now my last question might be for somebody from La Cañada, which I think is quick also, is several people mentioned that those students in Sagebrush don't have equal access right now to La Cañada's offerings and I just wondered if that was referring only to students whose parents chose to go to Glendale Unified. There was a reference to the youth council not being able to participate. So I just wanted clarification about who that applied to.
Youth council is a city youth council. So the students, Sagebrush students in La Cañada have full access. So any Sagebrush student who remains in Glendale obviously does not have full access, but I think the point that the people were making was that there are, there are civic groups that the Sagebrush students don't have access to even though they're part of the city of La Cañada Flintridge because they're not being announced at the school and, and they're not, there's not that equal communication that gives them easier access. And just for clarification, the existing parcel, the parcel tax is existing and so it would transfer over if the territory transferred.
Did you have a question about that? Thank you.
I just want to note that we're going to be losing some of our members soon, so if this is a question that's, you know, essential for your ability to vote, I want you to ask it, but if not, okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, we've got people thinking about their flights and needing to get their coats and such. So I do want to give us time to deliberate and have as many of our members present for, for the vote as possible. Are there any other questions about this first part of the motion? The first motion that is on the table? All right, seeing none, I think we're ready then to do a roll call vote and this is on whether to uphold the CDE recommendation to deny the appeal, right?
Correct.
Can you restate what the motion is?
The motion...
I think I know, but I just want to be clear what the motion is that we're voting on.
Okay. It essentially says that.
Motion is, is to deny the appeal by Glendale.
Thank you.
And in essence, approve the territory transfer.
Exactly, yes.
Vote aye, you're voting for the territory transfer. You're voting...
The territory transfer election.
No, we're not talking about the...
We're not talking about the election yet.
Just talking about, I mean, we're not talking about the election area yet. We are saying it would go to election. It would go to election, yes. Okay.
Are we all clear? Okay, great. So we have the motion by Member Escobedo and a second by Member Olken. Member Ayipan?
Yes.
President Darling Hammond?
Yes.
Member Escobedo?
Yes.
Vice President Glover Woods?
Yes.
Member Lewis?
Yes.
Member McQuillan?
Yes.
Member Olken?
Yes.
Member Orozco Gonzalez?
Yes.
Member Patillo Bronson?
Yes.
Member Rodriguez?
No.
Member Yoshimoto Tari? The motion passes.
So now the second part of the question is around the territory transfer. So Member Escobedo, you were offering some comments.
Yes, I, you know, I just want to make, be clear about the precedent that we've established as a board to keep the, the voting to the transfer area. And I just wanted to hear from staff, is that, is that correct, that in the past, our board has limited the voting to the transfer area?
That's correct. There have been occasions in the past where staff recommended a different area, but to my knowledge, recent history going back at least to 2000, is that the board has consistently gone with the minimum statutorily required area.
Thank you.
I have a question. For the main reason is because the, the territory is a larger, that's one of the main things that we looked at. We look at this independently and for us, we thought it was reasonable to include other impacted areas that included the attendance areas of those two high schools. It seemed like a rational approach to us and that's why we included those attendance areas, because it's such a large territory.
How many of the 200 students that are going to Glendale go to the high school? Do you know how many?
I don't have an exact number, but roughly half and half. So half, so important point to note, on the La Cañada side, the, the high school and the middle school are a combined campus and then there's the elementary school. And so I believe it's roughly half of the students that are on inter-district transfers are attending that combined middle high school and about half of them are at the elementary school level, roughly.
Yes, go ahead, Vice President Glover Woods.
My question is enrollment, I'm going to ask you an enrollment number question and then the electoral numbers. For the two elementary schools, that would be impacted by the, by the transfer. For the two elementary schools, that would be impacted by the, by the transfer. What is the total enrollment at Mountain View and what is the total enrollment of students at Palm Crest? That's my first question.
There, I don't have exact numbers in front of me. It's a little over 500 at Mountain View and slightly smaller but similar up, okay. Mountain Avenue is, for the current year, it's 534. And actually, I'm sorry, Palm Crest for the current year is 608, so it's slightly larger.
Okay, my next question is the electorate area, the boundaries for those two schools, do you happen to know what the number is of actual voters in each of those areas?
We don't because unfortunately, that's not the way that county elections offices divvy up, you know, voters. You know, we're, we're sort of comparing apples and oranges. One is school attendance areas and the other is trustee areas, which is what, how they would normally, you know, divide up those numbers. And so the, the public commenters are correct that we believe that there would be more voters on the Glendale side than on the La Cañada side, but we unfortunately don't have exact numbers.
Thank you.
Other, yes, Member Patillo Bronson?
Sorry, this may be for the school district. This is back on the parcel tax. So the $500 parcel tax is funding for Glendale Unified or for La Crecena? I'm sorry.
Come to the, please come to the microphone. Thank you.
The current LCUSD parcel tax is for the residents of the La Cañada Unified Community School District. It does not apply to the Sagebrush residents because they're not a part of La Cañada Unified. So if they were to transfer over, the parcel tax would apply to them.
It's not a Glendale...
Oh, you're saying, right, yeah.
Okay, got it, got it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other, Member Escobedo, did you want to?
I'm fine with questions, I think.
Any other questions? I'll just say that, you know, I was persuaded by the notion that the election ought to be closer to the affected individuals, whether that's at the school level or the community, the neighborhood level.
And I agree, I agree. And I would like to make a motion to include only the Sagebrush transfer area as a area for elections to take place.
All right, so that's another motion. Member Lewis? A motion and a second. Is there discussion on that motion? Any, hearing none? I think we are ready to take a roll call on that motion.
Member Ayapan?
Yes.
President Darling Hammond?
Yes.
Member Escobedo?
Yes.
Vice President Glover Woods?
Yes.
Member Lewis?
Yes.
Member McQuillan?
Yes.
Member Olken?
Yes.
Member Orozco Gonzalez?
Yes.
Member Patillo Bronson?
Yes.
Member Rodriguez?
No.
Member Yoshimoto Tari?
No.
Motion carries.
Yes, we are, we have completed that item. Thank you, everyone, for both your comments, your feedback, your questions. These are complicated issues and we appreciate all of the input as well as all of the staff work. And at this moment, we are going to reopen item one to take action on the preliminary report of actions draft November 2023 meeting minutes and to report on our liaison assignments. And so are there, any speakers signed up to provide public comment in person on the action meeting minutes for November 2023?
There are no public commenters in the room for this one.
Okay. And so at this point, I'll ask, we have a motion.
I move that we accept the minutes.
Is there a second? Member Escobedo, thank you. I guess we needed a roll call vote on this. Thank you.
Member Ayapan?
Yes.
President Darling Hammond? Member Escobedo? Vice President Glover Woods?
Yes.
Member Lewis? Member McQuillan?
Yes.
Member Olken?
Aye.